The drawing will be on July 26, 2018. And if you want to read it in.
Continued from June 7, 2018, SEB Herringbrook Meadow LLC requests a modification to the comprehensive permit for Herringbrook Meadow LLC pursuant to MGL Chapter 40b Sections 20 to 23. The request for change is unfilled with the ZBA for the project located at 126 and 132 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, assessors map 58 block 1, Parcels 8A and 5 in Situate.
Thank you. Today we're going to hear from the advocate on some of the modifications that he's done. It's going to take about half hour, little whiles, and then the board will ask some questions, then we'll open it up to the audience. So if you can't hear, just raise your hand. We'll try to speak up so you can hear us at different locations. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Jeff Engler, representing SEB Herringbrook Meadow. We're excited about this evening. We've been in front of you for a long time, and we've gone through a lot of iterations, and we've had agreements. We've had some differences of opinion, and we've had a lot of issues identified, both from the board, from consultants, from the neighbors. And we think, and we're happy to discuss tonight, the plan in front of you really addresses in a profound and comprehensive way the key issues that we've been grappling with since really the public hearing opened. So we brought our team tonight to talk and introduce this new program and answer questions as the chairman indicated. And we certainly recognize that this was submitted about a week ago. We already, and we certainly appreciate that the board will be interested in the feedback from Woodard and Curran on the plan, as I'm on record and written communication indicates. You know, I'm prepared to pay their fee to re-review the plan. They have a copy of the full stormwater management report. They have a copy of all the engineering. And I don't want it too far ahead, but I understand there's no hearing scheduled in August, so that should be more than enough time for them to do a review and report back to you all at the next hearing. So with that said, I'd just like to, before I turn it over to my team, talk about some of the key changes of the plan. The first is the entire development area, building footprint, the roadway, the parking, all of it is above the 100-year FEMA flood plane. Let me say that again. Moving the entire development area, the building, the footprint, the roadway, out of the 100-year flood plane. All of the parking, the garage, all of that we've been talking about for nine months is out of the flood plane. The whole evacuation plan, which Sarah was never satisfied with, is gone because we have no cars in the flood area. So all of that is gone. No more relocation, no more what happens when we have Noah's Ark passing by, none of that. Everything is above the flood plane, everything, all the cars, all the emergency access. We've obviously created one building where there were two before. Granted, before we had one singular garage with two structures above. We now have one building. That building is 20,000 square feet smaller than the previous plan when taken in its totality. So we've reduced the plan from 94,000 square feet per square feet, give or take, to 74,700 square feet. So almost a 20,000-square-foot reduction in building area. The total development area has shrunk from approximately 3 and 1/2 acres to 2.7 acres. The building has been reduced in height by at least five feet. I say at least five feet because, as we've talked about, there's different methodologies that the town uses in terms of, is it a mean grade, is it first, fourth peak? So depending on the methodology you use, we're between five and 12 feet shorter, but at minimum, five feet shorter than the previous version. Fire access, which we talked about ad nauseam for many hearings. We had meetings. Your counsel attended the last one. We personally met with the fire department four times. Out of the last meeting, and Jay can characterize, we were talking about, you know, if we move this building, we can give the fire truck kind of access on this corner. They now have 360-degree access with their vehicle in this plan. And all the discussion about moving ladders around the back of the building when there's a flood and how much water, it's all gone. It's all gone. Because the whole thing is above a FEMA flood plane. So all of the fire protection, all of the fire safety issues that we've been grappling with, I have not sat with the fire department, and I certainly do not represent their thinking, but I can't imagine that they'll be anything other than tickled about this plan considering where we were before and what we're now giving them. Moreover, and I know this doesn't particularly concern you, but we're involved with a lot of 40b projects and rental projects, and it's rare where you have 360-degree vehicular access to a building. The area of isolated land subject to flooding is now 5,400 square feet as compared to 30,800 square feet in the previous version, which results in significantly less disturbance for compensatory storage volume to the meadow, which we know is important to the board and to the neighbors. And then lastly, relative to the utilities, the wastewater treatment system, that is effectively not changed. So Woodard and Curran will confine on that. Don't take my word for it, take their word for it. But there haven't been any dramatic changes in that, so we have every confidence we could engineer the previous plan to their satisfaction. This plan should not be an issue. So, and then obviously, we've changed use. Some person might say, well, we now have, before we had 48 units, we now have 60 units, which was the originally approved density. It is a rental building, so the town, under state regulations, not only counts the 15 affordable units, all 60 units go on the subsidized housing in Torrey to the town of Situate. So as the previous plan, under 48 homeownership units, the town would have counted 12 units. The town now would count 60 units. And the unit mix has changed in that rental units, by definition in general, are smaller than condominium units. We have 27 one-bedroom units in this plan. So that really allowed us to shrink the building considerably because the two bedrooms go from an average unit size. Here, two of our two bedrooms got fairly large, but let's just say for discussion purposes, on average, they were about 1,500, 1,550. Our average two-bedroom is now about 1,050 square feet. And we have 27 one-bedrooms that are 850 square feet. And whereas before we had some big penthouse units that were between 1,800 and 2,100 square feet, we have no units approaching that size. Our largest units are probably in the 1,300 to 1,375 range. So smaller units allowed us to take out 20,000 square feet, and obviously, the park and garage is gone. So those are the highlights. What I'd like to do is allow Al Trachemus from SciTech just to walk through from a little bit more of a technical standpoint what's going on, what their plans. Jim Veleko can talk about the architecture, and then we'll be happy to open it up to questions.
All right. Al Trachemus from SciTech Environmental, civil engineers on the project. And the first slide that Jeff has up is the site plan, and some of this will just be a reiteration of what he's already mentioned. But one of the main items that you first see here is that the building has been consolidated from two buildings to one building. We have also, and the basement garage has been eliminated. All parking will be surface parking, and it will all be above the 100-year flood plane, so that there are no issues any longer as far as emergency evacuation procedures within the garage, or any concerns regarding any pollutants from the, any vehicles that could have been left in the garage during a 100-year event washing out into the surrounding water area. So that has all gone away. The discussions with the fire department were, we had their concerns, I believe. We were close to addressing those, but the Englers decided to make a radical change to this, to the layout. And now we have the driveway continuing 360 degrees all the way around the back of the building, so we have a continuous loop. This driveway to the rear is 20 feet wide. It's wide enough for two-way traffic, but now the fire department has access all the way around the building, and they have areas to put up ladders or their ladder truck, extend the ladder truck. So there is good fire and emergency ambulance access around the entire building. By moving, by eliminating the two buildings and consolidating into one, we don't protrude back into the meadow area as far as we used to. That has now been pulled forward, much more toward Cushing Street. However, the previous building design, we had 90-plus foot is the minimum setback from Cushing. We now have a little over 100 feet. I think it's 104.7. But the setback of the building at its nearest point to Cushing Street is now over, Cushing Highway is now over 100 feet. And those are the, and we'll also be providing 100 parking spaces out here on the surface. And what that would end up doing is that would be providing a ratio of 1 and 1/2 to 1 spaces per unit plus 10 visitor spaces, which would be located up in this area here. So that is...
All right.
Okay. Those are the, those are the site plan changes. It's a significant improvement as far as circulation goes around the building for emergency access. It eliminates the, eliminates any issues relative to the garage flooding pollutants within the area. So in our opinion, this is a great change. And now that we're on to the grading plan, we can just pull that up a little bit.
Nice little stuff.
So now with the grading, the construction will be confined to the area along Chief Justice Cushing. The...
You want the overlay this time?
No, it's okay. And with the construction confined to the area of Chief Justice Cushing, what that's allowed us to do is to reduce the development area. Before, we were about 3.45 acres of development that we'd be working on here. Now that has been reduced to 2.7 acres. And once again, the rate, you can see the slope along the circular driveway here. That is just a, that's a grass slope that will be constructed that'll raise us up to above the 100-year flood plane going. And Jeff had mentioned Woodard and Curran, even though the drainage system is altered from what was previously shown, it's the same general type of drainage system. It's the drain manholes, the catch basins, the tide gates, the principles behind the drainage are the same. So it's just that you have to relocate your catch basins and drain manholes to accommodate the new layout. Also, the leaching area for the wastewater system, the sewer system, that remains in the same location. The buildings for the treatment unit, for the treatment system itself, those don't change. Those are now about a foot above the 100-year flood plane, so there's no issue with them getting any floodwaters during an event. And we'll still be bringing the water off of Chief Justice Cushing as well as the electric. There isn't any gas in this area at the present time unless they bring it up. It'll be, we'll have our onsite treatment system, then we'll have municipal water and the electric cable services. And that is, those are the improvements, but as you can see, even the grading has been pulled up significantly so that there is no longer as much intrusion into the meadow as the previous, as the previous plan.
Now, do you want me to go to the fire truck?
Yes. And then this is the, this is the turning template for the fire truck entering and exit, exiting. You can see that it just stays within the driveway all the way around and exits back to the station. Everything is one turning movement here. The previous layout, there was a Y-turn towards the, toward the garage that used to be up in this area. There isn't any backing up required any longer. It's a continuous motion, and whether you come in and take a left or come in and take a right, you can go continuously around the building. We also have an area, we call it a loading area or no parking area, immediately in front of the main entrance, perfect location for ambulances or police to park right at that location in case there's an emergency that needs immediate attention. So that's, we've done that revision as well. And that is the, that is the, that's fine for the access. And then the next plan that we have is, this one is...
That's the overlay of the previous, to the current plan.
All right. We had a couple, we had a few different overlays. And this is previously on the layout that we, not the original approved layout, but the layout that we had before. This was the area where you had the Y-turn coming in for the fire department, and you would come down into the garage, and you didn't have access, whereas now we're coming all the way along here. And you can see that we had the building area extending much further back into the field. This was the second building. And you can see the limit of the proposed building is now here. It's been, it's been brought back dramatically, so there is substantially much less impact to the field area on this. So you can see that the overall footprint of the previous layout and now the footprint of the building for the new layout, substantial reduction.
My name is Jim Veleko. I'm a project architect. And these are just pure elevations, and I'm sure that you can appreciate that with a pure elevation, everything looks flat, and you don't really get to see the articulation. You could see on the plans that there are a lot, there's a lot of movement of the building for shadows, and there is movement, as soon as I figure out, why am I pushing for this thing? So, this is the view from Route 3A. At Route 3A, as you know, there is a continuous wall of undergrowth and pine trees, and that we would be making this one opening just to the south of that beech tree, which would center on our main entrance. I'm proposing that at grade, there would be a continuous pelvis walkway for two reasons. One, so that the folks who are doing surface parking have a protected way to move to the building. And second, I'll admit, almost more important architecturally, is that it brings the scale of the building down by getting something that's nine feet high right next to you, so that as you view the building as you go to come in, and as you move along through and toward the building, you will be under an armpit. And that, then it's about 15 feet back to the building, and so all of the units on the first floor would have a little garden space. That would be small, 12 to 15 feet deep, 25 feet wide, but enough for some reasonable plantings. And the building, I think, is dented by plantings, and you expect to have a wood budget for planting them on the front. Furthermore, the building steps back at the third and fourth floors, so that perhaps you can see in this section that there's first two stories, and then it steps back for the next two stories. That's really hard to read here. I appreciate that, but that is another relief. So there's relief not only horizontally, as there are bumps and brens. Each of these one-bedroom units that are on the first two floors have a little bay, so that's further human scale for the first 20 feet. And then the two-bedroom units, which are on the third and fourth floor, they have small, very modest kind of French balconies, and they step back another six feet from the face of the building. I'm proposing that we use shingles on the first two floors of the natural tone shingle, and that we use clavards of a lighter color on the upper two floors that meets the sky. So that there'll be that banding of color, there'll be a similar banding of step back. And, hard to see here, but perhaps you can see it better on your images, there is a strong belt course at this point, and at this point, the belt course is an architectural device. I think at the very first night when I presented the previous building, we talked about these kinds of slight articulation of the facade with a little bit of an overhang at the second floor and at the parapet. Again, trying to take a large building and break it down into some manageable human-scale dimensions vertically and horizontally. Very briefly, it's hard for me to see, but here is the former building. It went down to elevation 12, down into the basement, which is about eight feet lower than where we now are at elevation 20 for our first floor and lobby, and extended about five feet higher to its peak than we now have to our roof. So just depending how you would sit there and decide how you wanted to measure that, it's anywhere from five to 12 feet. I think that one of the most important ways to think about it is, as this drawing shows, the height, the apparent height of the building will be somewhat lower than it previously was. Not trying to missleep, but...
Can you zoom that in just so we can see it sort of as it's seen? I don't think I can blow it out a little bit.
Where is, just zooming back. I know, but I have all of this stuff that I... Better?
No. No. One, please.
Are you trying to see the comparison of the former building or just the character of what we're proposing?
I would like to see everything, yes.
So, so this is what we were just talking about, the frame of the building, the front portico, the bay forms, one three, one bedroom unit. The fact that this part of the building steps back five and 1/2 feet from this part, you can probably make out now the continuous arborway covered walkway here and a hint of a fence. So there I am, walking along under this, then there's a fence to my right to give some privacy to the folks who are on the floor in here. And this shows better the belt course, which is basically an overhang of wood trim. If this is all clavards and shingles, this would be flat stock weight boards or exactly. That's happened here and here. Two different diagnostic plans. The first floor, again, there's the curb pepper, I think it had been for some time, the lodge beech tree lined up pretty well visually on the front entrance. There's some handicap parking, there is drop-off, and there is moving day van parking there, moving on into the lobby, and pretty simple double over corridor that has a little bit of articulation following the form of the exterior, but also from the inside, rather than just look down along the hallway to have some... And then this shows the setback of the third and fourth floors here, the first and second floor, vertical line here, which is that, and then the building steps back from there. On the first floor, there's a common room, and the reason that we bowed out this far for not only the turning reeds, for the fire department, but also we felt that one thing we had been lacking in previous schemes was some real soil, dry, open space. So here we are at a building at elevation 20 and land that is approximately elevation 17. I say approximately because it has to pitch somewhat. So it would be at its low point at 17, and probably 18 would get to the building, just so that water doesn't go, that's regular, every day, rainwater doesn't go toward the building. And then this common room would cause some sort of patio in the landscape, gets to be the patio one degree.
So that pretty much concludes what we wanted to present tonight. We're hope, happy to answer questions. One other thing I would mention, I don't know if the board particularly cares, but it's been mentioned several times about, well, you'll just build this and sell it. You don't care. The plan, our, our plan is, is we're going to own this. You know, we're going to have, with our equity investors, and this will be owned by SEB Herringbrook on an indefinite basis. So we have every intention to make this a high-quality fabulous place to live because we're going to be responsible for it, and we're going to be in it for the long haul. So that's what we plan, and we look forward to it. And with that said, we're happy to answer any questions on any of the slides or in general, or anything the board might have.
I probably have just a couple questions that they're, I'm sure they'll tell the board members, too, as well. So the, I know you've gone from 48 years to 60 years. How about the total bedroom count?
It's one less.
One less. Okay. So again, the set size is pretty much the same.
Pretty much.
All right. And then number of parking spots, 100?
99. So it's a ratio of 1.65 per unit, which for a rental project is pretty comfortable.
Yeah, it seems to, of course, well, with more than a lot of asylum regulations. And the elevation of the first floor was 20 feet?
Yes.
Or before it was 23 because it was sitting on...
Or before it was twenty-three because it was sitting on top of a parking garage. Didn't want that parking garage.
So you've lowered the first floor elevation.
So we're down three feet because of the elimination of the parking garage.
And confirm septic location is the same spot, but just a matter of what you're putting over now. You know, you probably have some heavy tanks and whatever you have to do with the leaching field to accommodate that.
Previously on the approved drawing, the leaching area was underneath the parking area. So we're going back to that same layout.
The origin. If it's already planned.
But the location's the same.
Right. If the looking was created. Anyone else?
Sure. I might have missed it during the presentation, recognizing that we get credit for sixty units under what I think is one of the stranger aspects of forty B. How many affordable units were it?
Fifteen?
Ten percent is twenty-five percent. If you count a hundred percent, we go to the rental.
Right. But so the town is gaining more affordable units in reality and in credit, obviously a significant increase. And then, I mean, to a certain extent, same number of beds on the septic, but it is a denser use from a septic standpoint, isn't it? I mean, I think the attributable amount of gallons per bed when you're dealing with one bedrooms can be a lot more than the second or third bedroom in a two or three-bedroom unit.
I think the calculations are the same though.
Yeah, they, right, by some of them, but in reality, there could be more toilet flushes in seven one-bedrooms than there are in three two-bedrooms in a one-bedroom. That second bedroom isn't always quite as occupied.
I would argue that with the kids in the two-bedroom, there's the toilet more than the older people.
That's right. And that's, that's if, that's if we had a lot of kids in our two-bedrooms in our condo units, but being in that demographic, it might not be entirely.
Rather than the.
You, that's, that's correct. I didn't mean to suggest otherwise. And you know what? I had another question, but we could double back to somebody else's turn. I hope we're not.
I was curious as to your analysis and thinking switching from owner occupied to rental? How you got there and why you got there?
It's a good question and there's a lot of different reasons, but basically we weren't convinced that we were going to be able to, on a site plan standpoint, we were going to be able to satisfy the board on all the issues that have been raised, most notably fire protection. Two, we couldn't shrink the building the way we needed to shrink it because, and do a whole ownership project, because the unit, you either lose too many units or the units are not marketable or whatnot. Three, moving the building forward as we did, it's just a more efficient construction. This construction will be a little bit easier to construct than the previous building. Four, we like rental housing. And frankly, we're involved in more rental projects than we are homeownership. And this area could use all housing types, but there'll be huge demand for this. So it was really a combination of site planning factors, economic factors that kind of all came together. I mean, believe me, we arrived where we arrived and it was that, you know, we spent a ton of money on stuff that's now on this, you know, on the cutting room floor. But maybe it was through that whole process and exercise that we arrived at the plan that we've currently arrived with and one that we're quite excited about and we think will work on many different levels. So I don't know if I really answered your question, but I tried.
Well, you answered some of it anyway. So, well, first of all, I wanted to applaud you. I think you guys, it's a, I think in terms of just pure architecture and visual, it's not as, I'm glad, I'm anxious if it, you know, the description helped a lot because this is kind of flat, you can't see, but it's not as quite as interesting, the building, but I think it's a much better project. And thank you for listening and making those changes. I can tell you guys did a lot of work and showed a lot of time.
Thank you. And in fairness to our architect, he's quite good. Our focus over the last six weeks has been mostly fire safety, site planning, FEMA, floodplain. As I said, we have every intention to make this a beautiful building. We just haven't fleshed out the plans to the level, you know, we've been in the previous iteration. But as part of a building firm application, I mean, we certainly have all of that information and more, you know, that would be happy to share with the board.
Is the, is the circular roadway, is that going to be two-way traffic and is that going to be personalized?
Here's a question and I would be happy to have this discussion. We could have it gated so the rear is only for emergency vehicles and fire trucks. And that way you don't have, because it's wide enough, frankly, to have, you know, traffic, I don't know why we would need that, but if it pleased the board and the fire departments, you know, we have a couple of knockbox gates at locations to be determined by the fire department. They control the access, so when they come in, they go up and they leave, they go down. We would be comfortable with that.
Yeah, they even have them on click right now. I think they do the lights so if they get out of the truck, don't they gate each?
We just wanted to make sure that they had access. That was really our intent, but if that pleases the board, I think, you know, we would be okay going in that direction. Couldn't tell you exactly where those gates were, but we would probably do consultation with the fire department and the civil engineers, figure out the best location to have them. So.
Be interested in knowing if the fire, obviously you will let them be the guide, if they would even require that to be paged or if it could be more of a stabilized surface that could be plowed, demarcated, because I think it's the architect said, is the first plan that's ever been done here where you have a place where you could put some patio and some Adirondack chairs and have a million-dollar view back there, which is spectacular. It'd be great to.
We were actually talking about that before you raised it tonight because as it's shown now, it's, you know, pitfully paved, but if there was a way, you know, to do it a little bit differently, you would be to buy them, you know, and support the vehicles and withstand the elements and whatnot. If that's a detail, we would be happy to discuss.
I mean, just on the outset, something, something like gated, you know, just appeals to me in the sense that, you know, it's great to have some green space, but, you know, if there's going to be kids in this building, there's got to be, kids like to be outside. And I would think it would be a much safer place for kids to have someplace where bikes or whatever, that you don't have traffic going through. And that's a wide-open spot. There would be, my concern, people might perish. Bust through that at a decent speed.
So maybe that's the direction we go in and if something on our next plan set, when we do it again, we can endeavor to identify where those gates may be located.
Yeah, and it's probably pretty, pretty simple to develop a plan, but with the parking ending, the locations there that might be the transition point to carry in, you know, again, if there's ways for the fire department to have access to that area, to a property, would probably make it safer for the residents to have that traffic-free area, if you will, central emergency vehicles.
I was actually, while we're on that subject, I'll say what I was thinking. In the previous plan, when you had the large area that was reserved for parking in the event of storms, I think it was talked about that being paved with a paving block that allowed grass to come up through and have an appearance of a grass, but something that could be plowed and cleared and made accessible. This, to me, suggests that same kind of material because it does create a nice front yard type thing. As long as it continues to have that, it is plowed during winter and has that access for the fire trucks. I don't think it, it needs to be a circular raceway for the residents to get all the way around the building. If I were on the backside of the building, I think I'd prefer not have cars going by evening, that type of thing. So that's.
Also Central Park, that project, we called it, approved the same type of roadway. The pack is the left side, so it's really something.
Gated?
I don't think it was gated, but they had it paved or.
Oh, I see. The material.
If you're familiar with the Central Park building, there's going to be a project behind it, rental, similar, I think similar size.
Smaller.
A little smaller. But they wanted access around the existing Central Park building, the old central school. And that went down between the school and the tower, but on that kind of paving turn. So I'd like to just, I'm mindful of the fact that we are here as a modification, that there is an existing forty B plan approved for this property. And I recognize that, just listening to some comments in the audience, it's startling to see this change. We've kind of started to see a different building and now we see this one. But I do echo Sarah's comments. I applaud you for your diligence here and thoughtfulness. Clearly, we raised a lot of questions. The garage was a big issue. You resolved that. Fire access safety was a big issue. You addressed that. The amount of fill coming in, it was significantly reduced, I believe it was thirty to five.
That was the filling of the compensatory storage and we have less fill, certainly in the FEMA floodplain, but to be candid, the amount of fill is pretty close to what was in the previous plan, but not in the flood zone.
Less area.
People, most, less fill, yeah, right.
Both do.
Right.
About four percent more fill, I think, on the sum? Is that your total volume back here, relocated, isolated?
No, I don't think it's on that plan, Anthony, but that's a number we can provide to you, but it's pretty close. I mean, the amount of total fill is not.
I was overzealous about what you.
No, but, well, not necessarily. I mean, where that fill is going though, is in a very different area. It's not in the FEMA floodplain. The compensatory storage is being reduced from thirty thousand square feet, what's being filled with five. So those two things are.
And these were the areas that we were.
Concerned about.
The town that raised concerns.
Right.
Neighbors had raised concerns about, correct, quote, filling in the.
Meadow.
The meadow, which currently holds that water and keeps it from going.
Correct.
So I, again, I don't have a much more comment in that respect, except I think you've listened very carefully and you, you have a project approved which you could build without going through this whole process at all. And your, your request for modification is what we're addressing really in these hearings. And this is a big modification from the first project. It's a big modification from the second project, but it is kind of melding to a project.
Well, I think in comparison to both projects, the amount of disturbance, this one is much less than the previous two. I mean, almost by acre, which is not.
The three was acre, I think.
Yeah. Well, from the, from two, from one B, from the plan of record that we had submitted, I couldn't say for certain. The other one, probably be a little bit more because that a three-building then more surface parking. Let's just say it's a significant introduction, whatever that is from the previous plan in terms of what's being developed on the site.
Yeah, I will point out from, for historical purposes, and maybe Sarah will remember this maybe Ed, and you weren't here, when there were prior discussions or negotiations with the prior developer in his council, one of the things that we were trying to stress when I was working with the then-town planner and some other folks on the municipal side was, let's get these buildings closer to the frontage, figure out what you could do there so we could save this kind of view shed. The really nice parts of the meadow are from where your limited work is now and beyond. I think you do save the view shed for some of these folks on, on Martha's Lane a lot more, which is, was a goal then and it appears to be coming around now. I love the landscaping in the back too. Nothing like, oh, it counts for anything, but I think that's a huge, huge.
And we haven't, that would be something to, well, to add to all landscape and plan.
Can I get a, maybe from side tech, just a little bit of a description or a detail on the retaining wall in the crook over by Gloria's house as well as the retaining wall over by the riverfront on the curve on the other side, height and kind of just general sense of that, just to have an idea in my head. I couldn't tell.
I would, I would use a full-size gray, twenty acres.
If you just ballpark, I was just curious for how much of a retaining wall you had to do there.
You've done some height-wise?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking.
The top of the retaining wall is at elevation seventeen.
Yeah.
And the bottom is right around twelve, around ten, nine point eight. So you'd be going from, you'd be looking at a seven-foot tall wall at its highest point.
Sorry, which wall is this? There's a handful on the table. You have a pointer? Thank you.
The one over to the south.
The left. Thank you.
It goes to zero.
Right, it starts off at zero in this corner and zero in this corner. And as we approach the middle, it rises up to seven and then it tails off back down to zero again. Because you're starting here, you're beating existing grade. And then you have to hold back this area here to raise this to elevation seventeen and the same thing along here. So then at this point here, it starts out at existing grade again and then it starts holding back to the seven feet to get it back up to elevation seventeen and out of flood zone. So it's one foot tall and then.
And then on the other side, on the riverfront side? You have a sense of that?
On the riverfront side.
You're eighteen at the top.
Right.
And then Kimberly read it on the, on the bottom. On this side, I was fourteen.
I'm trying to read that. I need the full size because I can't read it right again. Jay, we'll get you. I think it's elevation eight right here, so right in this area here, this will be a ten-foot tall wall. Once again, we would start off at zero. It would be about ten feet in this area, then it trail off to zero again over in this corner.
Just kind of reading the tea leaves. I'm wondering if, and I don't know what's in the corner of the Holstein's yard there. It would be great if you could touch base with them maybe so, you know, if that retaining wall is right on, against their property and just make some contact with them and I would want to have a retaining wall right there if I, so I don't know what kind of impact it poses.
But Jay, I don't think the retaining wall is, I mean, your point's well taken, but it's not right on the property. Probably twelve sixty maybe.
What is right on the Holstein's?
Right on their property.
So Holstein property, yeah.
Oh, that, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about.
The other one.
I was like Gloria lives on the other side because we flipped one.
No, I.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think it'd be good to maybe to approach them about what you could do, unless you could, I'm assuming you can't pull it back anymore to do landscaping on your side of that.
Could be a stone through the air or something to.
Yeah, or plant, plantings.
I think that would, that would, they're just.
Maybe we can have gate with a couple of images.
Yeah, I figured that the next iteration would be, would be a good idea, just kind of trying to issue spot so we can get, get through things. And just to, so that people have the benefit of knowing, this kind of partially enters your question to Jeff about how they got here. And I did send the memo to the chair. We had a meeting, myself and Jeff and the fire chief and the deputy chief and their technical team had talked about the old design and the side closest to Holstein's property where it was kind of tight than what the fire department suggested was. And I think this was actually Ed suggested the same thing at the last meeting. If we could kind of take a few feet off of that side of the building and displace it somewhere else, maybe we could at least reach two sides of the building and the, the fire And the fire department was kind of going the same way and thinking that. And there was, what we left with after that meeting was, okay, we'll take a look at that. And that probably was a little bit of a domino effect that led into some of your other decision making.
Well, it all, it all did. I mean, that was one, and whether or not that was satisfactory, we know there were members that were not thrilled with the evacuation plan or the Apple operation. Some other people were more concerned about fire personnel having to walk through with the ladder. So different people had their different kind of issues, you know? Listen, this plan is not perfect, but relative to what we've heard, you know, and the big issues and things that we've wrestled with, I mean, it's pretty good.
No, that's it. I mean, we have some procedural things to clean up with extensions.
Extension and.
Order.
Have they?
They have a proposal, but I haven't reviewed it yet.
Because I honestly have not funded.
Yeah, no, I think Annie and I got that this week, so I'll take a look at it.
Can you send it to the?
Yeah.
So for today's purposes, we won't be talking about the stormwater.
We're not, I mean, because we.
I feel a little better off talking about once it's reviewed. I wonder if Karen, again, if they would say that those are kind of issues that will be resolved by them rather than.
Yes, I mean, you saw the size of the study you submitted. I mean, and most of it is agreed with the manufac. So, um, so I, we're comfortable deferring because we know you guys put your trust in their review. So let's see what they have to say.
Any other questions to avoid, for the.
Just one thing, I feel like I want to say it for the audience. Folks, think and have your opinions about the project. These gentlemen and ladies have conducted themselves professionally and have gone to great lengths to accommodate and address a lot of what we and you have expressed. Please return that professionalism and courtesy in your comments. Ma'am, I was not looking directly at you. That's just the way my head was pointing. I'm not at all. Please don't. That's just the way I was looking. I was not speaking to you directly, I promise you. I, as a group, as a whole, and to people who come before us, please return that courtesy.
So we'll open it up to the audience. Could you just state your name and address where we start?
Number one, I'm Marsha Klein at one forty-six Chief Justice Cushing Highway. And to answer your question, I think we have been nothing but kind and patient with the developer. And I think you're making that comment. We have not been, we have not made bad comments. We have been kind. We have deferred to them and everything. And I think you're talking to us as a bit condescending and unnecessary. Now for my question. I've been, we've been patient with the board. This has been my home for thirty, more than thirty-eight years. And it's my home, and it's my life savings, and I'm worried about it. And if I get a little upset about it, that's my right, because I'm adjacent to the project and I have a right to voice my concerns. But I think I've done it quietly and with decor and with class. And I think all of us have acted like that. And I think that was an unnecessary comment. Thank you. And what I would like to know from the developer is, what is the grade of fill between my house and your building? And what are you going to do about the light pollution that's going to happen with the parking that's going to be available and created? That's my question. Thank you very much.
So again, just for developers, your property is to the south of the project.
Nor, my property, north of the.
Okay, excuse me, you're north. You're the closest to three M. Okay. So I think we were asking about the higher retaining wall over there, so if.
We're going to get some imagery on that. Relative to the lighting, we have not asked for any waivers. So we will, we'll be submitting a lighting plan, but it has to comply with the situat bylaws. And we need to advance our landscaping plan, but relative to parking, I mean, if the director butters on the perimeter wanted a, you know, six-foot lattice top fence or whatever the tallest fence is allowed under situat zoning bylaws, we would not be opposed to that. But from a lighting perspective, we have to comply. We have not asked for any waivers, so.
Yes.
Frank Kilduff, one twenty-five, Chief Justice Cushing. Two questions and a comment. Is there an anticipation of having onsite management for this rental building on a twenty-four hour basis?
I don't know about twenty-four hours, but certainly when we're not, there's not somebody not there. They'll need to be within a short distance.
And the second question is, the, the plan we were looking at before involved retaining a fair amount of vegetation, the natural vegetation between the northern aspect of the project and the two houses that are there. Is that still in place?
Could, I'm sorry, could you?
On the, on the. On the most, right there.
Oh, in that area?
Between those two homes.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of woods.
Right.
Well, that's actually only one home.
So that wouldn't be affected by this.
There's two, there are two there.
We have the home here that's.
That's our home.
Right.
Yeah.
That was pretty much flooded up. And then we have one right along.
Yeah.
At the corner, right there.
So how else is that not constructed?
But there'll still, there'll still be an effort to retain the vegetation as much as possible.
Yeah.
My comment is, I think that this plan is far superior to the one we saw before. And I personally appreciate the effort that's gone into trying to make it more acceptable as well as safer for the people that are going to live there. So thank you for your effort.
Yes. Warren Burrow, fifteen Markers Lane. I was wondering if we could get an electronic copy and a hard copy, just one for all the neighbors and I can distribute it to them. I don't know if they can pass that to Annie.
Yeah, so we can direct Annie to email to someone to.
Share my information. If we can, just like I said, get a hard copy of all the recent bills and electronic copy, that would be great.
A hard copy. You can take that.
Take it. Great, I'll grab it.
That's what we're going to share tonight.
Also, I have a question on the first drawing that was, or print that was up at the beginning. Show all the parking spots. Yep, I don't know, we can back it up. Five Markers Lane, which is in the corner there, all those parking, what's the distance between the property line and those parking spots? And how are you going to reduce all the headlights that are coming in from like fifty cars?
Well, that was.
Shining on that property. And the front is west of it.
There's a ton of vegetation here, but if, if, if people wanted it, you know, we could fence that property line. I mean, the car light is what, twenty-four inches above the ground? If we put a six-foot high fence here, and I think it would really be unnecessary over there, but if that neighbor wanted it, we would consider that as well. And I would, so anybody entering, obviously the cars enter and they're shining right up the hill. And if they turn there and you have a fence and the lighting is here, I think that would be fairly significant relative to reducing that. So let us look into that and on our landscaping plan, we'll show the, where fencing is proposed.
I mean, that would be great if we put a fence, because if you drive by there at night, there's probably about two, three house lights on that whole area. It's completely black. That's the way we like it. We've had it like, it's been like that for thirty years. Now we have possibly a hundred cars coming in and out of it. So it's going to be quite an increase in light.
I don't know this dimension, but if we have a fence basically on the property line, the other thing we can do is we can also plant a whole bunch of shrubs or bushes or whatnot between the edge of the parking space and the fence. Although, I mean, that would look, relative to the lighting, it would, it would look nicer from the inside. But if you have a fence here, you know, having bushes, like having fenceside and bushes down here. The fence is enough, but you get what I'm saying.
Yeah, because those are blocking the light. Because like I said, if you drive by there now, it's completely black. That's the way it's been. Now we have a hundred cars going in and out. They're shining headlights. And I'm sure there's going to be parking lights there as well. I would, and then one other question, I know you didn't mention it. I'm not sure if it's on the drawing, but where's the dumpster of the facility? That's the chemical house, as the gentleman said.
Or the dumpster right in front of it.
That's in front of it.
It is difficult to see there, because the print is so blurry.
Yeah, this is the Rachel House, and then the dumpster is right here at the end of the parking area. And the elevation is currently, uh, on the entrance of Chief Justice Cushing Highway, right near the tree. Do you know the elevation of that compared to what it is at the, I guess, base elevation of the structure? Or is this going to be? About elevation eighteen at the entranceway, and the finished first floor of the building will be elevation twenty. Okay, so you have, well, the two-foot rise there in the elevation.
Right, over about a hundred feet.
Okay. And the septic, you said, is in about the same area there? It is. On the corner, I guess the south corner. Right, that has not changed amongst any of the layouts. That is where the leaching area has always been proposed to go and will go. Is there an area for an expansion or when that goes, don't they have to have a certain area expansion set aside? There's a light dashed line in the middle. We have one area that's primary and one area that's reserved. Yeah, I think it would be good if you did. I know there was a talk earlier about having that gated. It would be better for kids or people walking out there, less traffic. It's less light headlights for the neighbors. And I think it would give it more of a natural feel instead of, like one gentleman, I think the chairman recommended the honeycomb. It would be wrapped. So it's just natural. So it would pay, it's better for them to have.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Yes.
Um, Gloria Holstein, the Martha's Lane. So I want to concur with everybody at first glance, this is a far superior project plan than the others that have been presented. So I think the board and the developer, as well as all of my neighbors who have conducted themselves with such class and professionalism, that we have finally come to something that perhaps we cannot live with. I also think it's fantastic to have sixty affordable units for the town. I know it's fifteen, but it will come to sixty, because I am a proponent for affordable housing. There are some concerns that I have regarding the light pollution, light trespass, but it sounds like the developer is certainly willing to work with us and come up with a plan. And I may have some questions regarding that retaining wall. And is there still a swale there going down the property line for the stormwater runoff? Can SciTech answer that? Is that, how, is that still performing in the same way?
In this area?
Yes, and running down the.
The, the landscape area will continue to run down as it currently does. Right now, this entire area flows in this direction. What's going to happen in the future is the entire parking area will have catch basins and manholes. So all this area will be picked up and taken out and sent over to this portion of the property. None of this will, none of this area will flow toward you. The only, you'll have less area flowing toward your property than under existing conditions. And it's just the grass landscape area. No failure.
So after review, I'm sure there are some more questions, but I think it's a far superior plan and much improved. Thank you.
Yes.
Matt Kilduff, one twenty-five, Chief Justice Cushing Highway. More of just a possible suggestion in the landscaping plan. For those of us that do live on Chief Justice Cushing Highway, it's actually gotten pretty loud in the last, I don't know, ten years, of traffic. I think you have the benefit currently of some older vegetation. If you are able to keep any of it, it would probably benefit your residents. That's all.
Yes.
Jennifer Evans, Millgate Street. I have an observation. I've been watching the rail bed out there, which is a natural berm to this property. And I was surprised this spring how drastically it had eroded from the winter storms this year. And it should be taken into advisement that it will very soon be offering absolutely no protection to this property or anyone else that's around it, for that matter. And I also went to the coastal climate assessment for situat. And they're saying in the next few years, we will have a one-foot rise in sea level. And after what you just said about the septic treatment plant or whatever it is, one foot above it, I think it should be perhaps even elevated more for the long term.
I think that town just, anecdotally, the town's conservation commission has a regulation that talks about anticipating some level of rise. And I think the last plan addressed that. And I think this one does as well, is my understanding. That they are anticipating in terms of levels of the lowest structural component in terms of how high it has to be above what is current. It has some built-in future thinking.
BEB required.
Yeah, and even the local regulation, which might be even a little bit more stringent. And I believe SciTech worked with Woodard and Karen, and they all reviewed that. And I'm assuming that nothing's different here in terms of the first, the lowest structural elements on the, on the building.
I was concerned more, excuse me, Rob, because I heard a mention, next to Marsha Klein's property, where the treatment plant, chemical building is, they had said at the beginning, it was one foot above the flood elevation?
A hundred year.
Yeah, well, yeah, one foot, one foot though.
If you're talking about a one-foot rise in sea level, you're talking about water on the normal tides coming up here one foot higher on a regular basis. That's not going to impact this property at all. And what we're talking about is that FEMA just raised the hundred-year flood elevation in this area by six feet. And what we're saying is that chemical building is, the slab is one foot higher than that one-hundred-year flood elevation. And that's an impact of a matter of hours when the flood comes in and goes out. It's not a daily, weekly, or monthly event. That's a catastrophic event. And the building would still be above that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Kathy Donaghy, Cushing Landing. I agree with our neighbors that this is a big improvement and a lot of the concerns that we had are now taken off the table, that, you know, the garage and all that, we just knew it was just going to be trouble for everybody. So thank you for that. One of the things, years ago, we worked with this people at the Herrenbrook Mall on the driveway and being nearby and everybody realizing the value of the marsh and the importance of the environment. And what they did was they, on their parking area, they had a berm and they lowered the lighting quite a bit. And they put in vegetation. And both of those things have been long-term successes. So what they did there, we'd love it that these people could do it. We understand the building's going to be very tall and it's going to shed a tremendous amount of light still on the, on the nearby weapons. But at least, you know, the parking area and all that will help these neighbors. Because I know that right now, the neighbors to the library are having quite a difficult time because of all the headlights coming into their homes from the parking area. So I think if we can take a page out of the Herrenbrook Mall people and do the best we can for the parking. And then I think the exterior lighting of the building, it would be great to see how that can be limited on the backside, safety on the front side, but limited on the backside, so that the beautiful view that they enjoy can continue to be that view for everybody. It is, you know, obviously, it's a very commercial-looking building compared to the neighbors, who all get small houses with peep roofs. But if affordable housing can be done that way and we can do the best to compromise, then we're all ahead of the game.
Thank you.
I think for the next.
I think for the next plan, next hearing, I think we'll endeavor to have a preliminary lighting plan, because that's been talked about a lot tonight, and I think it dovetails with the landscaping plan too, so we'll plan on submitting that.
Any other?
Yes.
Russell, 132, Chief Justice Cushing. My persistent issue is northbound traffic on 3A has a blind spot, my driveway and this proposed driveway. I know they said they have a certain blind site, but if you're heading north on 3A, the passing zone starts at the end of the street. You can look, there's a rise and a dip. It looks like it's a clear stretch of road, but there could still be vehicles traveling at highway at speed in that road spot while people trying to pull in and out of here. And I just don't understand why it couldn't at least be proposed for the state to relook at that, maybe remark the passing zone so it's not a blind spot in the passing zone, and maybe drop the speed limit. I mean, 50 mile an hour passings, how fast do you think people would buy my house on a regular basis? And any vehicle coming out of this property, heading north, is going to be, at night, of course, there's shining lights and, you know, my friend, I'm very close to 3A because my house was built in 1870. So, I mean, it was a dirt path. I just think that, you know, safety should be something that really is looked into in that respect, because it's a very dangerous spot to have all that traffic pouring in and out of it, 50 something miles an hour.
And some of that modification you speak of is not in front of us tonight, so it would be a little bit more difficult to address that.
That whole stretch is a blind spot.
Yep, I understand, but that was addressed a few permits ago. I don't know if we can ask them to look at that at this point.
Which is not to say that we disagree with.
Well, yeah, the passing zone was mismarked many years ago. It's been like that forever. I don't know where, anywhere in the country you can find a blind passing zone. I mean, it's just ridiculous.
Yes?
Andrea, 166, Milgate Road. Can you explain in a little bit more detail about the percentage that we would be gaining with the 40B by having more units as rentals?
Yes, what they do before, they had 48 units. And 25% of those units, or 12 units, would be considered affordable towards our count. But also, you have to be careful when you have that, 12 units that are affordable, you also gain a total number of units in house of 48, so you get your 25%. But with the rental units, there are 60, you just owe 25% of the 60, 15 units are considered rental affordable, rental units count with 100%, so 60 of those units will come towards the situation of affordable count.
I see. Thank you.
Just to clarify, we wouldn't have gotten credit for 48 under the power of fire.
Correct.
So getting credit for them, just because they're rentals, we get credit for them?
Correct. And I'll state also, in combination with the Lost and Green project, it looks like we will get a two-year safe harbor with the approval of this project, whereby we can control as a town, new 40Bs, we would have more authority to say no or shape them better because with the benefits that we'd be getting from 60, because I think where at 72 would be 1%. So this would be 60 plus the 30, so we'll be in good shape according to what Brad Washburn, the town's director of planning, Jose Villalobos, told me.
Thank you, that's what I'm thinking.
One of the challenges with 40B is when you put in 100 units and you get 25% credit, you just increased your housing stock by 100, so you buy more. You kind of slowly creep me up to it that you can never really make headway.
Thank you.
Yes?
Jennifer, 24, Milgate Lane. I have a question, is there an existing house and garage on the property?
Yes.
So both buildings are there now?
One was demolished years ago, one is there and not occupied.
Okay, so I was wondering if the current house, I believe it was built in 1960, I'd like the board to request a lead paint test to be done since there are going to be children on the property. And I would request that...
I think it's going to be taken down and removed, so...
That's, I would like the test done before anything's taken down and goes into the soil.
That's part of the demolition requirement. The demolition permit requires that properties be evaluated.
Right, by the owner, but I would like the board to request that they hire.
So the board has no authority over the building code, and they are going to have to apply for a demolition permit, and the building commissioner will deal with that. It just doesn't reach what the board has here. That'll get taken care of in the normal due course when they seek a demolition permit?
I've never seen it done. I want to lead paint.
I can't, I can't...
I can speak from personal experience. When a property that was built in 1983, in order to be demoed, it had to be a lead paint test, and lead had to be evaluated. There's actually lead, there was lead, in the, or asbestos, in the stainless steel sink, which was manufactured sometimes after 1980, but in the coating that they put on the bottom of the stainless steel sink. It had to be removed separately and taken disposable to hazardous waste disposal. These things are part of the normal routine course of demolition. I mean, when they demoed, when they demoed the police station, these are the things that they had to deal with, asbestos removal, paint, etc.
So the actually, the owner is responsible for doing that?
The person does the demolition.
So I would just request that the board do it?
We have no authority.
I have no authority. I have no, right. I have another question, too. I'm just looking for the original existing 40B plan that they are modifying. So they're making modifications to a plan that they approved and are requiring at the inspections office, and they don't have a copy of that.
I think we, it's probably in the archives.
Might be old enough that we're not required to copy it.
Yes. But we had also, they also presented it at one of our first meetings as well, I think, briefly.
I actually have, you know, I have a plan that shows the original...
Not this original, she was talking about your...
Not the approved plan.
The one they're modifying, the 15-year-old one?
There were two of them, there were two plans.
Right. And that's what we're...
I have the, I have an overlay of this building on the approved, the plan that was, the plan of record that was approved that we're seeking to modify. I don't have a copy of the, whatever was originally filed.
No, 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 I think the one that goes...
The one that we're modifying. So this is on the zoning office?
This plan we created, but somebody should have, so you can see, this is our building.
We lost the whole application and everything from the original. 15 years ago, we have it.
I'm sure, I'm sure it's in the archives.
I don't think we built what we're modifying.
It doesn't really, frankly, it's really...
It answers to this question.
It really doesn't, what we're modifying is, it's simply saying they don't want to build what has been approved. The entire bill was going to prove that it would be landscaped to do that. They're saying that we don't want to build that, we want to build something that be, I sat on the original one, I think.
Yes.
I know, I know I did, yes. You don't want that.
It had multiple community regulations.
You were just not called.
And we, very early in the hearing, we voted that this change was substantial, and thus much more significant review of this application had to happen. So that hurdle already didn't go their way, for lack of a more technical explanation.
No, I'm just concerned at why it's not a new application, and if you can't see...
Because they have a permit. You don't have, you don't have to have a new application when you have a permit. They're seeking to modify the existing permit, which they do have.
Okay, so are there any documents at the zoning board from the original permit?
Probably in the archives.
In the archives, okay. Could I request that I see them? Go down there. Yes, you could request them on the phone number. To the, and it was 15 years ago, I think, 2008. It's like 12, 2006. Okay, and...
And let me, can I just say something about that? We denied it, and it went up to the Housing Appeals Committee, and they said, you denied it, you should never have denied it, so we're allowing it. So it's approved. The approved prime is not something we, any of us who are on the board, I was on it, you were on that, do you think? You're not sure. I know Jay was too. It was not a good one.
And to that end, the court records with the Housing Appeals Court may be the best place for you to get the information you're looking at, because some of the items in the zoning file may have, became moot through the decision of the Housing Appeals Court.
No longer.
As far as the question about the passing zone on 3A, we challenged whether or not that was a safe, whether there was traffic issues and safety issues associated with the plan those before, so the court took it back and submitted a file.
I'm sure our record retention is up to snuff. We don't, certainly don't have the resources that the Housing Appeals Court will. That's probably a good first place to start.
But we would, again, we would have the plan that was denied, the Housing Appeal Court would have the plan that was...
I'm not sure...
Essentially, it was approved.
I'm not sure if the plan that was denied in our file gains you.
So if we have a permit, where are the plans for the permit that's approved that he is making modifications?
It's a permit at the state level, not at the, not at our level.
We have the plans. If they make a public record request for the plans, they'll be provided in due course.
Because I want to see what he's revising, how much more fill is putting in that originally was approved, all of that. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Can I just say, and I could be wrong, Jennifer?
Just, I know, because you better, but just name it.
Again, Martha's Lane. This piece of, the larger part of the parcel, the old Watson property, prior to the developer buying it, that was for sale, there were, I believe, three buildable lots in the front of that property. And that's, they're using a bit more than that, but that's where they are now proposing the building. So even if they didn't develop there, somebody would have had the ability to develop and at least put in three buildable lots, at least 15 years ago. Turns out that the 40B got here, you know, unfortunately, due to some corruption at the town level, the new constitution, and so on and so forth. Nonetheless, this is by far the best project, best footprint, best for the environment, best for the enviros, best for the town overall that we have seen yet in the 14 years that this has been going on. And I, comment for me, I'll show you a lot.
Slow clap, Gloria. Any other questions?
Warren Pearl, 15, Martha's Lane. Just two more questions. Obviously, this plan is going to be subject to snow removal and everything. Woodward Karne is going to look at that, because it looks like there's a lot more parking area, it seems, outside. What are they going to do with the snow in the winter?
Yes, I think part of that plan is going to be...
From Woodward Karne?
Yeah.
And also, just seems like there's a lot more impervious surface now compared to the old plan. I don't know how that is looked at.
You know, it might seem like that, but they've linked, they shortened the driveway also, and the building, its windows is less, so I don't know how much...
But that's going to be detailed by...
Detailed, it would be covered in the waterway, and then plus, if they change the rear surface asphalt to something for thorough, that would help as well.
But those will be looked at, I guess, for Woodward Karne?
Yes, that's going to be reviewed.
I can't answer you again. What are the actual dimensions of the building? We've got the square footage, but we didn't have the, the front.
You want my best estimate?
No, no, I want the number, I want the number, thank you.
Roughly a rectangle, so I think we should be able to do this map.
So the dimensions, the length of the building and the depth of the building?
Yep.
And to be, the architecture, no doubt.
We'll get you that, Kathy. We can scale it now, but it's going to be a problem.
That's fine, it's not to scale.
It's not to scale?
Well, that's that printed version.
It's the scale that's been reduced, so we can't deal with it.
And then I think, I know, Warren's question, I know that in the past, it had been that the septic field was going to be like, was number one, was going to be a grassy area in the first proposal, and then the more recent one was going to be a parking meadow. So I guess it doesn't, you can put impervious material over a septic field, okay.
Dave Donaghy, Cushing Landing. With all the previous parking area, there's going to be some stormwater runoff. Does the developer, is the operator of the building, still applying to the comprehensive general permit for reporting stormwater runoff?
And again, that's going to be answered, the stormwater runoff of that, it's going to be reviewed and answered. Right now, I'm going to defer, do we get that information back from Woodward Karne?
They've already done a comprehensive report, and for the next time, our engineer who's been with us from the beginning is going to be taking a look at that and working closely with SciTech to address, there's always little issues here and there, but there's been a lot of discussion and calculation over the years, so I think the two sets of engineers have a good sense of where the water goes and how much it can handle.
There will be a reporting mechanism under the comprehensive general permit?
I think what the, sir, I think what you're referring to is, let's just, for discussion's sake, say, SciTech and the town's peer review consultant come to an agreement, quote unquote, that the plan works, we'll have maintenance requirements that are written into the permit that the system has to be serviced, you know, in accordance to our operation and maintenance plan. So it's not like it gets installed once and no one ever touches it. We have reported that needs to occur on an ongoing basis to make sure that the system is functioning properly. If it's not, well, we have to repair and maintain it. So, I don't know if that answered your question, but it's, the review that's going on now is kind of focused on, does it work, and this is how it should be maintained? And then in the permit, it's written in that you have to, they reference back to the documents, you on a, you know, whether it's biannual or quarterly or whatever is the recommended service plan, we have to make sure that that gets done, so.
Again, that was discussed in the last permit as well, too, that they, you know, when you clean this out, how you clean out, what type of filters are in there, but that's, that's all done as part of the stormwater use plan to, to address that.
Thank you.
So at, I guess, just to go with Jeff at the next meeting, it sounds like we're going to have, we got the parking space already, retaining wall information, heights?
Well, I'd like to do, and I'll say this for the record, you know, if Gloria, you know, could give me, I'd like, honestly, I'd like to share some retaining wall images with our two of us, to get, you know, yeah, I like that, or here's three choices, which one do you like best? That way, the plan that ultimately gets submitted can have the benefit of the neighbors. But to answer your question, landscaping, we'll have a preliminary lighting plan, we'll have a snow storage or snow management plan.
Fencing and planting?
Fencing and plant, that's part of the landscape.
Right, so that'll...
That'll be included. We'll talk about the gate, maybe that's a conversation I can have, or we'll send the plan through the fire department.
You can talk to Deputy Chief Elliott about that.
See if he has any suggestions, or maybe we'll propose a couple and see which one he likes and why.
Rear pavement?
Yeah, the material, we'll get back to you with some thoughts on that. Heights of the retaining walls, they're not only local, they look like, but we'll give you, you know, more specific heights. Length and depth of the building, I think, those are, and then obviously, the wooden curb review, which is not something where...
They're ready to go, so I'll just, I'll pull their proposal.
So those are the notes that I took.
I mean, on the rear drive access, from what I heard, the consensus out there, and it makes sense, I think that the neighborhood will prefer that that access is restricted.
Yeah, I mean, it does a few things, helps them with the traffic for the kids.
I would prefer it if I were the next door.
Yeah, cuts down on lighting, transfer to the neighbors at certain times of day. day.
That's intended for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, I, so, I mean, well, eventual restriction obviously has to work for the fire department, but...
The less vehicles, too. It really is an environmental sensitive area.
Yep, but you're just going to raise your hand, just let us know your name.
Martha's Lane.
Thank you.
I mean, we have fought all along about the sensitivity, the environment, the sensitive area that's there, the less vehicles, you know, in that area, you see that, there's a lot of wildlife there, along with the river waves, and so on and so forth.
Thank you.
You have a date for the next hearing?
There's no regular August meeting, there's no...
September.
No, there's no August meeting, because there's no applications, isn't that it, wife?
No, we don't have an August meeting.
I don't know, legally, why? Because that's what I'm saying, you were scared to death.
Because we don't want to come to an August meeting.
To be clear, it's difficult to get the board to something.
Really? That's the first time I've ever heard of no August meeting, just when I leave.
Wait a minute, don't you not have standing to comment on it?
I'm like, it's March, I don't come anymore, just the old one I come.
Oh, wait till September.
I'm just saying, it's like, no, no, I, the first meeting is definitely, but six to Troy first, in the matter of eight weeks.
So we can't, so the, that Thursday, the four Labor Days, and I'm going to work Thursday of August.
How about Tuesday?
Yeah, Tuesday, Tuesday. Let's get it done.
Tuesday, September first, September fourth, achieving, or the day after Labor Day?
I, I started major trial, which will, it's not great. You're talking Tuesday?
Tuesday, September fourth.
Well, I don't mind that, because you're gone Thursday, right? Or is that tight?
You could settle it.
Oh, I'd like to settle.
Yeah, you could do settle it, the defense would like you to settle it, too.
Yeah, they would, that's my point.
We're just discussing a date now, so we can formulate the next meeting, so we'd like to tell you that before...
About the twenty-eighth of August. That's a Tuesday.
It is still August, and that's true.
You said the thirtieth, we're looking.
Someone said...
Thirty-fifth. Thirty-fifth, it's close to September, we almost...
Oh, I actually didn't want to have a regular August meeting.
So that's a period?
End of August?
So that's, was that the day of the week, that Thursday?
Thursday, August thirtieth.
So Thursday, August thirtieth. Do we want to do this room?
Yeah.
So we'll shoot for this room, if available, if not...
Seven thirty, what do you see?
And we'll shoot, actually, seven thirty, it's the last day of the month, it's a little busy, a little tough for you to get out of the city.
So the next meeting will be Thursday, August thirtieth, seven thirty. Right now, we're going to try to get this location, but we haven't confirmed that yet, so if you want to check in with any, sometimes you can have...
Check the website, you'll post it on the website. Yeah, check in the zoning board's website, it would be great.
August thirtieth, Thursday.
Hey, did you guys have any other schedules right here? We'll get the plans in, we'll, we'll put, Jay said, what are current, ready to roll? That's a good one. What is that, five weeks?
There you go. Thank you. Any good?